Good evening to everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with the work session. We'll call Mr. Stewart.
A few months ago, the mayor was asked by a person in town to consider the establishment of a position known as poet laureate for the city of Florence. Of course, where the laureate goes all the way back to the Greeks when they use the laurel branches to put on the head of the people who won sports contests. So laureate has a long and storied history. States in our country have all had poet laureate for a long, long time. Perhaps you remember seeing film clips when Robert Frost read the poem that he had written for President Kennedy's inauguration. Okay, enough of that because my time's limited. But our state has a poet laureate. And usually these are limited in time. Most of them are limited to either two years or four years within the states. And I'll leave a couple of handouts for you to read later. You don't have time to stop and read them now. But there are actually four or five states that don't have poet laureate. I was a little surprised to find that out myself because Alabama has had a poet laureate for a long time. In fact, one of the poet laureate from our state was from Florence, actually, Mr. Morton Crowdy, whom some of you might have known. So we're very interested in the establishment of this position of poet laureate for our town. I had sent, you already have seen the minutes of our last meeting, I think. You sent those out with it. Yeah, so I don't have to review all of that quickly. But the committee members are here with me, right here in Brian Murphy, Charlotte Tomlinson, and Nancy Olsen Nelson. Have to get all that right. Nancy Olsen Nelson.
Owen.
Owen, excuse me. Yeah, didn't get it right. So the poet laureate position that we would like to establish, we have laid it out very carefully in the handout that you have in your possession. And we, as I say, we call ourselves the steering committee. We're not the official selection committee unless we go further, you go further with this and you decide that the steering committee ought to be at least the first selection committee, but that too will be your decision. But I tried very carefully to put in the minutes of that meeting, a step-by-step process that includes also how long we proposed that a poet laureate would serve, how a committee would be formed to select the poet laureate from this point on, and then even the cost involved. Most of it is free, but because the poet laureate would be expected to be at various events, the opening of, you know, when the new city hall is opened or whatever in this town, the poet laureate is expected, of course, to be there. So that little amount, what is it, fifteen hundred dollars, I think it is, would really just cover the cost of gasoline or whatever. It's not a paid position per se. It's only to cover some minimal expenses to it. I would like to just read one quick paragraph that I copied from the internet, and I'll leave a copy of this with you as well. It says, "All but four states, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Michigan, and Pennsylvania have established poet laureate positions. These positions are an important way to honor a poet and recognize the place that poetry has in the state's culture or tradition and civic life. The poet serving in these roles is an ambassador of the art form itself, poetry, well, is literature, literacy, and storytelling. Additionally, many cities, large and small, now honor a poet in their community with the title poet laureate. Similar to state poets laureate, these poets are important champions of the art form in their community and work to inspire the next generation of poets and their readers." Of the thirty-five, this is very interesting. We can be out in front of all of this. Of the thirty-five U.S. cities with populations of 500,000, we're not anywhere near that, but we're going to show them, right? Of the thirty-five U.S. cities with populations of 500,000 residents or more, there are sixteen with city poets laureate. And then he goes on to say where you can find those cities and whatever. But because we are a university town, it stands to reason, at least to us, that we need to be the leader of the state in establishing a poet laureate for our town. So that's where it is at this point, and I would welcome any questions.
You can just go ahead and remove my name for consideration on this position.
Jimmy, your name was at the top, wasn't it? What, see?
I got a feeling it was not.
Neither was mine, by the way. Other questions, anybody? Good, thank you, Jimmy. Anybody?
I love it.
Well, I either did a great job or you want me to be quiet, one of the two. No, thank you. I'm sorry, Jimmy.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do thank you for your attention and for giving us this few minutes to do this. And I will leave that particular handout for you about other states and cities with poet laureate. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Shayna?
I have item T on the agenda, a resolution to apply for a north plus Alabama RC and New Grant for the duplication board for additional wildflower planting for next season. Any questions?
I was hoping it was this season.
Well, they're already planning it for this season. So this will be funding if approved for the next season.
And is there a match to this?
No. It's a reversible.
Hundred percent?
No match. Anything else?
I do. Thank you. Please fill me up for Mr. Jones.
I am.
Ms. Stewart.
So he did call me late last week, and he informed me that that work was emergent. Let me find it on the documents that we have. Oh, I, yes, this work has been done because it was an emergency repair to the ice machine at Starkey Drive, but it has been completed.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That's simple. Carrie?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have two items on the consent agenda. Item H is a resolution to approve the payment of invoice from Barnett Plumbing for emergency repairs to a Fort Waterley plumbing leak we had here in City Hall building, an amount of $517 to be paid from our budget billed in maintenance funds. The next item is item M is a resolution to approve a contract with Irons Electric. It's to provide labor materials and as-needed basis for electrical repairs here at City Hall. This renewal of a contract that council approved three years ago is just coming up for renewal.
Did the price on that change?
No.
So they left the...
Their labor charges, nothing changed from the one three years ago.
That's good. I don't get that very often.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, everyone, I have item 11D. This is a payment of an invoice for a burner assembly on a boiler at the Arts Center. This is from back in December.
So it's been repaired?
Yes.
Everything's going good with it?
What's that?
Everything's going good with it?
Yes, absolutely. It's working.
Good deal. Any questions for him? Good stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
Any questions about the annexation?
I would only position that from the planning commission's perspective, this did pass unanimously from that group, and it went through our group twice. If it serves, correct, Ms. Bailey?
It did.
No questions? Hi, Ms. Bailey. Thank you. Chief.
Good afternoon. I have two items. Item N on the consent agenda is a resolution to approve a contract with Lambert Diesel Group Architecture for five professional services necessary to provide an HVAC system of upper floor of police headquarters.
Is it not working currently? And how old is the equipment that you have there?
So it is not, and I've been told that the units there on the roof of the building are at least 25 years old. So what we did in the budget we're living in now, we budgeted $100,000. We thought it was going to be 25,000 per unit to replace. What we've learned since that time is that that probably won't fix the problem, so we're going to bring architects to come in and do a review, see exactly what it needs to be. So we're already budgeting for 100,000. Mr. Easton said that they project the cost of this work to be somewhere in the area of $4,000, so that would come out of that 100,000 that was budgeted. We just didn't want to spend money on something that didn't fix the problem.
So will you then add that to your budget for the '25, '26 year that will be approved this summer?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, because the way the time is, I don't think we've got time to be able to bid it out and have it ready to go before the meeting. That's the plan.
And how long do you expect it to take with the architect?
That's hard to say. It'll be during this budget year. It just kind of depends on their schedule, but certainly this budget year to know what we're looking at to ask for their budget.
And are you having to bring in portable units? Because if you don't have air now, it's starting to get hot outside.
So we have air. It's just inconsistent, and inconsistent is an understatement, but we have air and we have fans and other things that are usually in the meantime. It's not a crisis situation. It's just something we're trying to work on for the future. Any other questions on that one?
Yes, good.
All right. My second item is a contract to enter into a contract with Tango Tango to provide integration services to include GPS tracking, interoperability, online management, in-app texting, on-device audio playback. I'll kind of stop there. In layman's terms, it's an app. It was on the agenda two weeks ago. The dollar amount was wrong, and I wanted to make it public safety first anyway before bringing this to the entire group. What this does, it provides every, an unlimited amount of users within the police department to have at their fingertips, on their phone, live, not just transmitting, but monitoring of a primary radio channel. In an emergency situation when an off-duty officer is somewhere, they can immediately access that whereas not to have a radio with them. Because normally how they would do that, if they encounter something that needs police attention, if they have their family with them or something where they're not going to intervene, they get on the phone and call dispatch, then it has to be relayed to the officers where now they can go to this app and transmit directly on the primary radio frequency. The dollar amount for that is $29.95 per year. It's a year-to-year contract, so for whatever reason, we're not satisfied with it, which is what we're doing the contract for the year. Any questions?
I've spoken to officers with three different police forces since we met and asked them if they use Tango Tango, and each one of them knew what it was and said, "Oh, no, we don't have that. That's our goal is to have that." And then they gave me the specifics because that's what the other forces are looking to move to. It sounds really good.
Yeah, I think it's going to be valuable to...
Chief, referring to Mr. Griffin's meeting that we had for Public Safety Committee, I will say you addressed a lot of the questions that we as a committee had for you, not the least of which is how many of your officers would have access to it. So I was glad to get your email to say that everybody would be unlimited, and it could be a month-to-month contract, that there was no year-long contract that we were signing, and it can be ended at any time.
Well, it's...
A 12-month contract?
A 12-month, yes, ma'am.
That can be ended year-to-year?
Yes.
Okay. But that's the total cost, and that's everything?
That's everything. And we've been demoing this product for probably a month now. I've used it as the chief before. We've had car chases that I was alerted about, and I can listen to them immediately, and it just streamlined the communication. I didn't have to ask questions. Everything was just right there. It's been so far as being ready.
And for the benefit of the rest of the council, this did pass the Public Safety Committee unions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good and weird. Oh, interesting.
I'm Tyler, if I haven't met any of y'all, by the way.
I'm Tyler.
We have four items this evening. The first one is a resolution to approve a contract with Shell Pest Control to furnish all labor equipment materials and incidentals necessary to provide installation of advanced termite baiting system, spot treatment at the maintenance shop in a contract amount of $1,275, and for annual treatments of $2,050. We paid 1,800 already for this year, so all we will have left is the $1,275. And the annual that we normally paid was 1,800, and now it will be $2,050 annually.
So Tyler, is this a new contract that we have, or have we always been treating for this?
We've had Cook's Pest Control for 1,800.
Okay, so this is a new?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know why we changed?
We found termite infestation at our maintenance shop, so we had to get them to, or we got to get them to treat it and then put out baits.
Thank you.
The second item is item J, a resolution to approve a contract with Stuart Engineering to provide electrical engineering and traffic services on as-needed basis. Any questions?
Is this just a contract renewal? Have we had this previously?
No, ma'am, we have not.
So this one's a new one of those consulting contracts?
Yes, ma'am. This is the one, I believe, that was discussed in one of the utility committee meetings that will help us with our meal solving.
Okay, yeah. She did discuss it with us at a previous committee meeting. Thank you.
Yes. The third is item K. It's a resolution to approve a contract with Jackson Thornton to provide consulting services to perform a cost allocation study and to develop a formula for cost, formal cost allocation manual for the city of Florence electricity department, the amount of $19,500.
Was that also covered, Mr. Edwards, at a utility committee meeting?
I think we discussed it in the finance committee. The wage compares.
Oh, that's the wage comparison one? Okay, yes, we did.
This word, TPA, tells us what we can't do.
I wasn't acquainted with its formal name. It's government name. Thank you.
Any other questions? The last one is L. It's a resolution to approve assignment agreement with Parsons Transportation Group to provide media data management systems for the city of Florence utilities. This was our MDM. It was IP Keys, and Parsons has taken over IP Keys. Thank you all.
Thank you. Dan?
Good afternoon. I have three items on the consent agenda. Item P is an invoice to J&amp;M Fence Service. This was for the emergency repair of the fence at Huntsboro Roof Station. This is where the car ran through it for a second time, so that has been taken care of, and we are seeking a means of getting reimbursed for that through insurance. I think Mr. Jones is working on that for us.
Good.
Any questions on that?
That was my question.
It's still in the process, but we are working on that. Item U is, this is to amend an agreement with True North Geographic Technologies LLC. This is for the renewal of our hosting and support for City Works. The amount of $18,750 was approved on January 23rd of this year. This is for a three-year period, but there was some confusion with the billing, and the way they were billing was quarterly instead of annually, so I have requested that they only bill us annually moving forward. So the amendment is for the amount of $26,250, but that will cover us through the end of 2026. So that amount will fulfill our three-year renewal. Any questions on that?
Can you call up those figures again? What's that, something different?
Okay, so the original amount approved, I think if my, if I didn't have a typo, was $18,750. January, I think that was January of this year was the, and then the amount that we need to amend is $26,250, which if my math is correct, that's $45,000. It's $50,000 annually. Like I said, there was some confusion with the billing, which is the reason why that was off. So I've asked them not to send quarterly statements, just to send us the three-year renewal, and we will pay the three-year renewal as we have for the last several years. And then item V is, this is a quote of the amount of $29,125 from Brent Fence Company. This is for the replacement of fence on the southeast side of the administrative offices at Rickwood Road. So we've already done the one section, and we would like to go ahead and complete the other section as well, and this is budgeted funds, account number 39000, structures and improvements. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
The first thing I guess y'all want to do to change orders since this is a credit, we'll do that one first.
Oh, yeah.
So this was a credit that's going back from our contingency funds for the River Heritage Maintenance Building, and that would be the amount of $5,325.62.
Motion, we accept the credit.
Motion, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Second, I'm Mr. Edwards. Everybody's in favor, right?
That's a great bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We might, fellas, you can get one more if you want.
Not today, but maybe.
Okay.
Maybe next time.
All right.
Thank y'all. The first item is item E, and that will be to submit a payment to Henderson Roof, and they did some emergency work after the windstorm a few weeks ago and replaced some roof flashing, took down an awning for us, and that amount was $11,991.
Did another awning go back up?
We're in the process of getting that just when we get a price for it.
Okay.
It was hanging, and we got it in a van the next day, so they had to remove it. Next item is item F, and that would be another invoice for Janko 360, and they installed a drive motor replacement and scope for the pool vacuum at Royal Avenue, and this was done as they were there on the, on-site. Instead of having to clog them back, they went ahead and did the work, and that amount Item G, this is a contract with Irons Electric, and they will be installing and providing three outdoor disconnects and two LED pool lights, and that will be a Royal Avenue pool, and that amount is $2,550.
Are we on track, Bill, to open these up at the right time? We usually have Memorial Day to Labor Day open.
Yes, that we are. We've got handy filled up, and so knock on wood, everything except a couple of lights are out, but we are on track with lifeguards and done very well. Yes, ma'am.
Do the revenues we generate come anywhere close to helping offset these costs?
No, ma'am. They help, but, you know, not as, not as much. The bad thing about a pool is you have to maintain them year-round, even though you're not using them year-round.
How many lifeguards do we bring on?
Don't know the exact number, but they've got, you know, sometimes they'll hire up to 15 or 20, but they're having a good year of getting lifeguards. Our new supervisor's done a really good job of recruiting, so we should have ample amount.
Do you know when you guys were at least pool opening dates?
We're shooting for Memorial Day. That's our, that's our goal, just like any other year, so if nothing else happens, we're Memorial Day will be the day. But don't hold me to it. We're trying really hard. And this is for the next one. Item Q is to enter into a contract with Janko 360, and they will provide in repair, preventative maintenance and service and material as needed, and you'll see the labor cost and the travel, and then they'll build the material based on the cost of it, and that would have taken care of that item that they were there on-site and did the repair for us. Item F, so that's to be able to do items like that while they're actually here on-site.
And how often will you bring them in? It says as needed, but have you done regular routine maintenance?
We have, but like item F, while they were there on a contractor to do the pool welding, they found that they needed to do something else, so they went ahead and repaired it. So that'll be able to give us the ability to do that instead of having to clog them back and enter into a contract with them. I can't tell you what the exact, there's a maximum amount you can go up to with that. It's not an unlimited amount. You have to, maybe 30,000, but I may be wrong with that, but there's a threshold that you can't go over. The next is item S, and this is to enter into an MOU with STEM daycare for kids camp. They will be providing a camp for us, and they will provide a 25% profit split with us. That'll be held up at the Coliseum.
Are we charging them?
No, ma'am. It's a split cost. They'll provide the insurance as needed. Item W is enter into a contract with Commercial Roofing Services, and this is actually to repair the damage that was done during the windstorm at the Coliseum on the roof. This is the same company, if you remember, several years ago, they did the, re, put the coating on there, and this is the same company that did that, and that amount is $29,970.
Bill, that's two roofing incidents on the Coliseum that are totaling, oh, about $40,000.
Yes.
Are those split with the county?
They're in, I think there was an email today, I think Mr. Musgrove and Mr. Smith are working through some negotiations on how to move forward with that. I hadn't really, I hadn't been in those, so I can't answer that, but I know that's part of the discussion of how to split those costs.
So as of today, those are the city's costs?
Yes, ma'am. Those are the same windstorm. One was an emergency repair to keep it from doing any further damage. This is the repair to actually do the work to fix it for good.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next is item X, and this is an invoice with J Industrial Repair, and they repaired the motor pump for our irrigation system at the Sportsplex, and that amount is $28,644.4.
Have any questions for him?
Thank y'all very much. Good afternoon.
Mr. Light?
I have three items on the agenda tonight, and they're all alcohol-related. First one is to approve an alcohol beverage license by Brothers Market LLC doing business at Marathon located at 2804 Gloverdale Road with off-premises beer and wine, convenience store. Second one is a resolution to approve alcohol beverage license for Rod Heatt 2019 Inc., doing business at Smile Fuels located at 2200 Chisen Road, Suite A, also off-premise retail, table wine and beer, again, convenience store. And then the last one is a resolution to approve an alcohol beverage license for Rod Heatt 2019 Inc., doing business at Smile Package Store located at 2200 Chisen Road, Suite B, and that, again, for, it comes under Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Package Store. So it's a package store from there, they have no picture.
So they're different?
All of these are just changing ownership, correct?
Yes.
These aren't new liquor stores.
No, these are, no, these are already in existence.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, is due basis?
I, I need to look something up, because, well, I might ask you later, before we start our meeting, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have four items on the agenda, the first one is eleven R. And I think you should have received some information about that. Probably to remember that we worked with ZACOG to file for a land and water grant, which McFarland was actually, the campground there was built using that grant funding. And we have received, or will receive around four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So eleven R is for the administrative work. They get so much as part of that grant application, and the project cost will not exceed forty-three thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty-three cents, which will come from the grant funds themselves. And no additional cost will be incurred. And this is a contractual agreement, simply stipulates the distribution of the administrative fees to ZACOG. Any question?
I have one, but it may go to Bill. Do we have a date when the working, the campground's gonna start? For a month?
August.
Okay. Will the whole campground be shut down during this process, or will you work one end to the, and then open the other? Or will it all be shut down?
With the campground or the campground and the pier?
Campground only.
Campground only, a project to be shut down, because we're redoing, researches and roads, and so it'll probably, we're trying to minimize peak season, but I can't promise it won't be before Labor Day.
Do you have a projected date for the pier to be opened?
We received this, the architect is reviewing them, so it could be in, maybe June.
Oh, that's good news.
Any other questions? I've got, the next item is eleven Y. Eleven Y and eleven Z are both, uh, part of our spirit of freedom. And the first one, Y, is with the city of James Marine. And that's up to seven thousand dollars for a tugboat. And eleven Z is up to three thousand dollars for Bubba's Marine. Uh, we gotta work with both of them to get the storage and the, everything we need for, for that event, so. Any questions on that? Last year we were, we had a pretty challenge with that, and glad to have that behind us. And the last one is Bill A., and I think at the last work session, y'all approved addition to the Civil Service Board. Uh, she will, Amber Flight Morgan will replace Deborah Kusuk, who could not be reappointed. And any questions? If not, I see Chris back there, I want to thank him again for great work on Mobile Plaza. Even with all the rain, probably worked out great, it couldn't be more pleasant.
Thank you. And at this time, um, Mr. Hendricks?
We also have Calvin Durham in the office to join us. Uh, does everyone have the handouts that was emailed over the weekend? If not, I brought copies.
I would appreciate a copy.
I brought six, just eight. So, um, I'm gonna give some history here that all of you already know, but just for those that aren't listening, maybe new. But, you know, several years ago, uh, the PBA was formed. Approximately forty-eight million dollars was borrowed at about one point five percent specifically for a new City Hall. Earlier, maybe at the end of last year, beginning of this year, we were looking at a ninety-eight thousand square foot building. And the projected budget for that was sixty, sixty-five million, which obviously was well above, uh, what we had in the bank. Uh, so we asked Mr. Durham to come back with some other options, and he, he gave us three new options to consider. Uh, one was a three-story, sixty thousand square foot building. One was a four-story, seventy-three thousand square foot building. And the third option was a four-story, eighty thousand square foot building. So Friday afternoon, four o'clock, we had a building and planning committee meeting to discuss these options, and to get a recommendation from that committee to bring to the council for full discussion. Out of that meeting, and I'll, I'll give a building and planning committee report on regular agenda, uh, it was recommended that, that we look at option three. And as it reads in my, uh, report, uh, there's a motion to present option two to the full council to have the architect conceptualize a design within those parameters, being the dollar and square footage amounts. If approved after the design is created, it would be brought back for further discussion. All department heads agree with this process. So very quickly, I'll go over the cost of each of these.
You did, you said option two, right?
Option two.
Okay, one done, you said option three, so.
Did I, I'm sorry, option two.
Okay, options.
So, uh, option one, the three-story, sixty thousand square foot building, what we focused on was project costs, not construction costs. And the, the total, uh, project cost came in at thirty-nine million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. However, we all agreed that that building was too tight to do everything that the, the city needs. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about the current square footage that we're using in comparison with these. So then we moved on and looked at option two, which was a seventy-three thousand square foot building, four stories. Forty-seven, forty-seven million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, and that one fit within the parameters of, of our cost, with the money that we have in the bank, and also exceeded the current square footage that we are using within City Hall, with the exception of EMA, which is not included in any of these square footages. Option three, which was the four-story, eighty thousand square foot building, came in at fifty-two million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So it was two and a half million dollars. Uh, above the, you know, we've got forty-eight million in the bank. We have loosely talked about going up to fifty million dollars of this project, and it exceeds that by another two and a half million. So, uh, Mr. Oliver made a recommendation with option two, uh, to bring it to the full council. I made the second, passed two to one, and it had, um, the recommendation of all the department heads that were present at the meeting as well. So I think it's important to point out at this time what we're not asking for tonight, because there seems to be a lot out there that basically, tonight, we're about to write a check for forty-eight billion dollars and award a contract, uh, to a contractor to build that forty-eight billion dollar building. That is not what we're asking for. Calvin, I wanna, you might cut it up to Mike for a moment. What we're asking for, when we looked at the ninety-eight thousand square foot building, you had brought, uh, a drawing, what I would call a conception, for us to decide and the department heads to look at and see if that worked for them, which is step one in making it to a building. And what we're asking for is with the parameters of option two, is for you to do the same for that, so that we can look at it, decide if it fits our budget, if it fits our department's heads' needs. And then if the council is comfortable with that, unlike the one that we were presented before, then you would move on to a full set of drawings. And in the final stage of that process, at a later date, would be a higher contractor. Am I correct in the timeline?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's five sections to a building coming, from programming all the way to the physical building, versus schematic design, and then comes design development. And that's, those two phases are kind of what we're talking about. Get through schematics, get the building roughly laid out, get in the feel for the vernacular of what the building's gonna look like. Need to get you an idea of layout and, uh, physical presence on the street. Once that's approved, we go into design development, and that's kind of where we take those raw bones and begin to put flesh on, and make sure the systems work, make sure mechanical, electrical's gonna work. Our data chases that, we get, we get in the nuts and bolts at that point. And then that eases into construction drawings. And that's, that's when we do the hundred and fifteen sheet set of drawings for you. And then at that point, typically it's bidding. And in this case, if we go with a construction manager at risk, what we would do is we would come back with a final price at that point, because they'd have the complete construction documents, know exactly what's going in. Uh, then after that is the twenty percent left, which is the construction administration, which is watching the building get built, follow inspections, et cetera. So that's correct. I will say your, um, the fifty, five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, Robinson Morton came in with their last estimate, right, about five hundred dollars a square foot. They had built in some inflation escalation in there. So the five fifty, I feel is a very, very safe number. In addition to that, we've been downsizing the auditorium, something that's a little more, uh, not as large. It's, it's got to be on the ground floor, so it's got, it's got pancake floors on top of it to support. So by doing this and minimizing that, some of that long span structure gets eliminated, so we don't have to worry about that. We're no longer a high-rise, so we get to remove the command center, some of the other portions of the building that are no longer required by code. Uh, and we also eliminate the, um, mechanical messroom pool. So there's, and then the city council chambers and mayor's office and all that is gonna be reduced as well. So if you take all those factors in, I feel comfortable with getting seventy-five thousand square feet. And I also feel comfortable, at this point from my discussions with Robinson Morton, that the five fifty is a very, very safe number right now.
Okay. And how, how this forty-seven million, nine twenty-three, two hundred as an estimate upfront came about, the, um, we used the five fifty per square foot, which included a construction management fee and a built-in change order allowance that we proactively, which we most likely would proactively change things along the path, uh, at seventy-three thousand square feet is forty million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we had our architectural and engineering fees at five point eight percent, which is two million, three twenty-eight, seven hundred. And then FFNE, which is furniture and fixtures, at two million, six oh nine, seven fifty, that was six point five percent. And these are all industry standard percentages based on this size, building and cost. And then OSNE, which is operating equipment and supplies, six point five percent, which is also two million, six oh nine, seven fifty. And then, uh, accounting or China with finance, had told us we're about a two hundred, potentially a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar shortfall on the contract for the deck, so that was built into that number as well. There may be some numbers that come off of that to actually lower this number. But with those working numbers, that, that's where we come up with the forty-seven million, nine twenty-three, two hundred, because the goal here is for us to, for me, and I think some of the other people on the council, is to, when we do approve a forty-eight or fifty million dollar contract, that that's a project cost, not a construction cost, so that we don't come back with fifteen to thirty percent of this FFNE, OSNE, and it's change order after change order, and pour it all right back up to the sixty million dollar building again. And so, um...
And I think our goal too is to, even though you factored in two point six million dollars for furniture and fixtures, we certainly would love to see that way below that, you know, which I think we can get below that.
Well, the mayor had said that all new purchases in the past few years were thought in mind to be moved in, into that building. So, you know, those, and, and Calvin has said that too, that some of those things can be tweaked to keep us within budget. We can make some sacrifices if we needed to. Uh, my biggest concern, and the one that I was most glad to hear you say, was that the five fifty with the inflationary, with everything that we're dealing with nationwide, and could be dealing with it, that they're still weird comfortable with that. But we, as a committee, felt option one was too small, and option three was too expensive. And, um, and so that's why Mr. Oliver made the recommendation on option two.
I'd like to add, if you don't mind, there's another aspect to this that, um, is kind of, um, I know someone said, "What's the hurry?" We, this money, we've had it, this bond money, we've had it for four years now. And, uh, I asked Mr. Musgrove, I know Mr. White here, and I had exchanged, he had some questions about bond money, and I remembered a, a case a year ago where I, I can't remember the details, someone got in trouble for sitting on bond money. So, long story short, I asked Mr. Musgrove to take a look into this. And Billy, I don't, if you don't mind, would you please come up? Because I mean, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, I know it's not gonna be accurate, and I have no legal mind whatsoever. But after three years of having bond money, long story short, you start getting looked at. And there is a danger, if we don't at least take a baby step forward in, in doing it, which is basically what we're doing tonight, or asking to be done tonight. Uh, we could, uh, we could be sued, am I correct, by the IRS? And audited, or, or both, or, and lose our credit rating if we don't at least make an effort to start moving forward. Am I correct, or can you clarify that a little more?
Yes sir, the, after five years are up from the period, from the time at which the money is borrowed, that's when the audit period starts for the IRS, when they might or might not take a look at the bond issue. And we already know that we have arbitrage issues, which we're dealing with, we're putting money away for that. The biggest risk is if the IRS determines that, uh, the city is disingenuous in borrowing the money and spending it, that we didn't have firm plans to spend it when we borrowed it, then it's with... The, the worst penalty is that the IRS could determine that the bonds are taxable. And at that point, uh, then the people who purchased the bonds would sue, um, to recover, because they would have to pay back taxes on the interest that, that they had earned, and they would sue the city to recover that. Um, the credit rating, I mean, it would affect it, I'm not, I don't know enough about it to know how badly or how, but... And, and these are, and, and this is not my specialty. And so I reached out to, uh, our bond, the city's bond attorney, Lee Virchall, who sent me a short summary of what can happen. So that would be a worst-case scenario. But when you, when you borrow tax-exempt money, you, the, you know, in every case I've ever seen, you sign, the, the city approves a non-arbitrage certificate, which basically just states that the city will make every reasonable effort to spend the funds within three years, because that's a safe harbor. If you have arbitrage during the first three years, and you spend the money in that period, then there's no penalty for earning more interest than what you're paying. But we're over that point, and, um, so we're just getting into, there's, we're accumulating some risk.
My point is, I guess, if a simple, we already have a contract with Mr., with Calvin here. Um, a simple gesture of go ahead and start working on what we have recommended, the building and planning committee, would be, I think, good enough for them to know that we're, if they were to come knocking on the door, uh, we, we could say, hey, you know, we, even though we changed directions, we're, we've got a path forward now.
That, that would be the best, to, to show, to, to show that the city's moving forward with the project, is, is what we, is what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Yes sir.
I'm, I'm saying thank you, any more questions?
With a second, from Ms. Oliver, you finished?
Yeah.
I thought you said in the meeting that, I know we had a contract, but you were gonna have to do a new contract.
Well, that's my, that, that would be my recommendation for, if, if, if the council decides to move the building across the street, um, and, and have a different footprint and size, then I would recommend that just for clarity's sake, we enter into a new contract with Mr. Durham's firm, just to keep everything separate, because they close out the current contract, it would, so, yes ma'am.
I, I know it's consensus, if this moves forward, we haven't taken an official vote, but...
Right.
Across the street was the consensus, I can guess I could safely still say, of the council, so...
Right.
With that being said, one would have to be in place. With that being said, one would have to be in place.
I would recommend that the city do a new contract for that, for architectural services, rather than doing the current contract.
So Calvin, what would that entail? I mean, we know we've got a contract with you right now, so what would be the change in the wording? Basically, a new design, or...
No, it would not be a new design. It just, I think what Billy's getting at is just to formulate the contract. Because right now, that contract is flawed, includes the parking deck, the demo, the municipal deck, all that's included in the contract.
Oh, I got you.
So Billy's saying, because of the funds that were used, just to pump the authority, just to clean that up a little bit, and just tighten, pull it up, and maybe punch it.
That's acceptable.
I got you.
I would like to say, if I could just mention all the numbers again, just so everybody's clear. The demo shortfall, we've got a change order proposal back for deductive change order of that contract of one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand to remove the parking lot. So that number would come down almost half if that's, you know, approved. That's to remove, we're going to put some additional parking back there, asphalt parking, which is not going to be needed if we're going to be moving forward that size, you could recoup that much of it. And then also the FFFNE fees, which is furnishings, equipment, et cetera. Y'all are in total control of that. That's just an arbitrage 6.5 number to kind of give you an idea, a little stump. You spent half that. So those numbers are in play, but they're not necessarily built into the contract, per se. It's that's up to you and how you want to proceed.
And you did, I want to share with everyone who wasn't in the meeting the other day. I asked a question, if this, if the council tonight gives you the go-ahead, you're saying a minimum of six months to have it completed. So, again, which is my concern, that the longer we wait, the more that stretches out, and the longer it's going to be before we can, you know, start construction.
Yeah, to Mr. Hendricks' point, I could have the preliminaries for the design, like the preliminary layouts and the rendering, giving idea what it would look like, a lot faster than that. However, to get to the form, we could put any spade in the ground, it's a minimum of six months. It could be as much as eight to ten. What I would suggest that we do in that point, to keep the things moving and make sure the bond money, they're okay with us moving forward with in terms of construction, is we get the construction manager at risk on board, and then we would work towards getting the foundation plan ready. So we would go ahead and release that foundation package, go ahead and start excavating, getting footed, and get that in works. Well, we're finishing up the back end, and then at that point, we'll finish up the building. Just for clarity.
Should this move forward, Mr. Durham, how long would this design phase that you have proposed here with option two, how long would that take?
Define what you mean by the design phase. Like to get your preliminaries and renderings back?
Yes.
You know, as little as a month, as long as two. I would say probably on the shorter end of that. That's a guess.
And so let's talk a little bit, too, about the price of construction cost. What are you seeing as far as that goes? Critics may say that, hey, we don't have this issue because we're not going to have increasing costs, and in fact, construction companies may be looking for work, and so the prices may come down. So it's a twofold question, and it has to do with construction managers and at-risk idea, and how much that would cost the city if we do it that way, and can we avoid that?
Okay. Two-fold, three-fold question, actually. Now, let's start the first one. Construction trends right now are basic level, they're starting to escalate a little bit, but not a lot, but they're...
More than what we're already seeing with inflationary costs.
They're along with those same lines. The tariff issue is the one that's kind of hanging out there, and nobody knows, because we're going back and forth on it. Steel goes up, construction prices are going to follow. Because energy prices go up, construction prices are going to follow. So that, I hope that answers that question for you on that part. The second part was, what, I could...
The at-risk?
No, there was one before that. You asked about the inflation, oh, the bidding market. Right now, we haven't had this in about five years, but I'm starting to have contractors call me and say, what have they got coming out? So that means that work's drying up with what they're working on, they're looking for additional work. Because when the market was fat, they were cherry-picking what they wanted. And if it was a sub-job that they really didn't want, they throw inflation price on it and say, we'll do it, but we're going to make it work for a while. So that additional expense is starting to come down. In our industry, we say that sharpening the pencil, and they're getting ready to sharpen the pencils, because they're looking for work. Now, construction manager at risk is twofold. There's two ways to approach this. We can do a standard hard bid, and we don't know what we're getting. I mean, we're going to bid it out, and what it comes into, it comes into. If it comes in over budget, we're limited to what we can cut out without having to rebid the project. That's the riskier standpoint. We also can't move forward with faster schedule. And again, we can't stay in front of inflation that way, even when the tariffs do start to get. So getting a construction manager at risk, basically, they're the contractor, the general contractor that will build the job, they've got skin in the game. So as I'm designing this building, they are looking over my shoulder, and we're making construction decisions together in the most economical fashion that we can, based on the current trends, because the GCs are more on top of that than the architects are. They know what the concrete's running, they know what steel's running, which is the better frame system to use for this, based on the current economy, that kind of thing. So I think you'll, we'll find out, we'll be better off financially from an economical standpoint by going with the construction manager at risk.
And then, how, can you please remind the group how much square footage we have here now, and that what seventy-three thousand looks like versus that?
Somebody, did you write that?
Like sixty-two, fifty-five thousand.
Was it fifty-seven total? I suppose fifty-seven, it's fifty-seven, sixty-seven, around that range.
And then, one other thing that was requested, is that in the design of this building, that it's designed in a way that we could add on, on the rear, or put a deck on the rear.
Yeah, what I would, because of the downtown infrastructure, I'm sensitive to that, as you come down Tennessee. So our building needs to front to line up with the rest of the buildings, which basically means the front of that building, same as the old design would have been, we're going to front it towards Tennessee Street. That's going to make the vacant area on the back side, because we've got an entire city block of depth to work with now. So about half of that, roughly, would be free space that we could do several options. You could do surface parking originally to start off with. You could later expand the building, and we would design it such that the expansion would be in the quarters, we would have the frames and stuff, knock down a wall and go on. And the same thing, if you wanted to put a municipal deck back there at some point, you could build a parking deck back there, and we would have additional areas up on the upper floors to tie those two structures together in the future. Does that answer the question?
Yes. And to catch everybody up, and I'll shut up after this. I think everyone up here, at one time or the other, has agreed that getting our employees closer to the new parking deck has been the driving force to moving across the street. And, of course, having a parking lot on the north side of the building, and then the parking deck, really helps our employees. And then a part, possibly a parking deck over here, not a parking deck, but a parking lot over here as well, gives plenty of parking.
It's the same original design, it's just been mirrored across Tennessee Street. All the same options are still available. Only we have a bigger footprint to work with now.
This is a question for Councilman Oliver and Councilman Hendricks. What, you mentioned very clearly that there were department heads that were present who were in favor of it. Can you share with us who that is?
Yes, that was going to be, will be in my report later, but in attendance with Gary Williamson, Building Department, Justin Mason of Building Department, Melissa Bailey with...
Building and Planning.
Planning and Community Development, yes. Shana Volch, Bill Musgrove, Steve Eason, Calvin, the mayor, President Simmons, Jimmy Oliver, and myself. Which is basically the Building and Planning Committee, plus the folks that the mayor, early on, had asked to be part of his team with, I guess, an ad hoc committee down at the mayor's office for the design of the City Hall.
You have questions for me?
I don't.
Thank you, Calvin.
Do you have any additional questions?
Hey, Mr. Simmons, you don't really have time for this, but I know Mr. Musgrove is part of that change in that contract, because it's going across the street, we'll have to handle the PBA, since those funds are in the public building. So... Yeah, I think he alluded to that, the PBA is the reason for changing, the tightening up the contract, because we're moving across the street. I think that's the purpose, that's the big change right there.
Is that a point? We've got some board appointments that we need to get taken care of. Everybody should have the applications. And we've got Riverdane, and the library, original, and...
I would like to nominate Chris Gorbataf. He is a nurse practitioner, and he's actually written a book on mental health for the Riverdane Board.
I see.
And I would like to, do we need to go over, so if I usually...
We usually do both for meetings.
And I would like to recommend, nominate Anthony Brooks. He was here, I think, a few months ago, the executive director of the SPAN program.
Not to call him out, but Mr. Gorbataf is here.
I'd like to say both nominees. I hate being put in a position like this, because both nominees are excellent. And, of course, I had already indicated, probably a month ago, I would support the one you're nominating there. But I would like to, if Mr. Brooks does not, is not accepted by this, find him a spot. I mean, he is certainly, he would certainly be an asset somewhere.
Okay, we have two nominees on the floor, so let's take a vote on all of them.
Mr. Chris Gorbataf.
Mr. Chris Gorbataf.
Top.
Top. Excuse me. Five, all of those. Okay, so there you go, so then, there are another one. Congratulations. For the library, original, we have the applications. The city, the city and county, the county's already voted. Hold that again. Leslie McCory. Leslie McCory. That was a joint with the city and the county, and the county has already voted on this, Leslie McCory. So just need if the city is wanting to support that as well.
I know her, I think she would be a good member of that group.
I'll second that.
Motion in second for Ms. Leslie McCory, all in favor?
Have a nomination.
I'm sorry?
Mr. David Carson.
You did, thank you.
Okay, so we have two, Ms. Leslie McCory, and then we have another nomination of Mr. David Carson. So all in favor of Ms. Leslie? And Mr., is it everybody?
That's five.
Five, and then Mr. Carson. And then we have the regional, the regional board.
Another one. Does it, then, T. Davis? I saw his, Mr. Davis, the one that was... The tree commission.
That only one here? So the tree is...
Actually, no, he was historical commission. And Mr. Davis is a home inspector, and I think he would be a great addition to the historical commission.
Yeah, we don't know if his historical wants to be.
Oh, we don't know that yet, okay.
So the two that we've taken, I'm sorry. Is that the only application, is tree commission?
That's the only one we have, and we have the back seat by there.
Right. So we have one application for the tree commission, Mr., what's his name again?
Jacob Hardy, and I'll make the...
Jacob Hardy?
Hardy, H-A-R-D-Y.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks for Jacob Hardy, second by Ms. Uvex, all in favor? Okay, that's it.
Kathy, well, because their terms have expired on the historical commission, will you reach out to them?
Yeah.
Is that okay to say this?
Yeah, she does that, but you're right.
I just try to get in touch with them to see. And then we also, we do have the ten day, but it's second half of this.
Okay, so we'll take care of those at the next meeting. Right, okay. This concludes the work session, and we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and get started.